Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Jalka.
Here.
White.
Here.
Short.
Here.
Please join us in a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're taking a motion on the agenda as proposed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Supposed. The agenda is approved. Next is public comments. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to the board on something that is not an agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on to claims and payments.
Morning, James.
Morning, Board.
Morning.
This week's expenditure is $221,521.39. The larger items, E-911, $59,900. Secondary roads, $49,983. Sheriff Department, $22,850. Health Department, $21,750. And IT, $20,828. Everything looked normal, so.
Very good. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next, we'll receive project updates from department heads or elected officials. Good morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
Kathy Nicholas County Engineer. A brief update on our construction contracts. The Cedar Falls River Bridge project is going well. Last week, the west side of the bridge was poured. It is undergoing a seven-day QR now. And then our contract asphalt resurfacing work on Elk Run is completed and on Shrock Road is also complete. And Aspro is over on Indian Creek and Spring Creek area, so that's just south of Jessup. And that surface lift, those surface courses should be finished being placed at the end of the day today. And then our Hess Row Bridge replacement project that our own bridge crew did, this was a structure that was determined that we needed to close it. Is an emergency action last inspection cycle. That has now been replaced and the bridge has reopened as of Monday, I believe. So can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great job.
Roy Giff, wanted to give you a brief update on the CARES dollars that we were allocated. The $1,663.710 that we received. Well, our first mittel was for $1,468.575. And of that, about 1.1 is going to be accrued back to FY '20 because that was back from March to June. So we're going to receive that. That's going to be on the audit in our financial statements as well. And then our second submittal will be here this week, and that's going to be for $195,135. So altogether, we're going to receive, like I said, the 1.6. And of that, $4.84 is going to be in this fiscal year, and the 1.1 is going to be in next fiscal year. So, or last fiscal year, sorry. So.
Would you mind, James, sending that in an email to us, too? I like to have that information.
You bet.
And to Grant as well. Okay, thanks. It's good to have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials today? We will move on to the minutes approved from the September 22 meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The minutes are approved. There will be a hearing a little bit later on in the meeting. It's a bid opening on proposed lease agreements. Next is the consent agenda.
All moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there anything in the consent agenda anybody wishes to discuss? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a proclamation declaring September Food Action Month. I'll turn it over to Barb Prather to say a few words about the efforts of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank.
Good morning. On behalf of the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, thank you again for the support the Board of Supervisors gives us in providing food and grocery products to nonprofit organizations and individuals in Northeast Iowa. To say the least, the last few months have not been the easiest for the food bank, but our staff and our volunteers have stepped up to really make a difference in the lives of many people. In the first four months of COVID relief, our food bank provided 4.1 million pounds, million meals of food to people in need throughout Northeast Iowa. Within five days of COVID starting, we changed our operation to make sure that volunteers would be safe as well as we had a curbside pickup for pantry clients that still is running today. And we're currently in the process of planning an opening plan, so stay tuned for more information on that. We can't do what we do without community support. September is traditionally a month that we continue to raise awareness to the issue of hunger in Northeast Iowa. And we have tried to do that all month, and on behalf of the food bank, thank you for proclaiming September Hunger Action Month. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Barb, to you and your staff and all the many volunteers that do just truly remarkable work keeping people fed in our community. It's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why did you wait till now to make that proclamation?
There was some, when I reached out, it was the middle of the month. It was a timing thing on our part, and it was the middle of the month, and I couldn't do it last Tuesday. It was, I, just miscommunication, so I apologize for that. But I just wanted to make sure that awareness was still raised and that we didn't not do it. So next year will be earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
And I'm happy to read this proclamation out loud. Proclamation of September is Hunger Action Month. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and in Blackhawk County, and whereas Blackhawk County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every state or every part of our state and to provide additional resources to citizens of Blackhawk County need. And whereas Blackhawk County is committed to working with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas nearly 200, or nearly 20,470 individuals in Blackhawk County rely on the food bank, on food provided by the Northeast Iowa Food Bank and member agencies annually. And whereas the Northeast Iowa Food Bank distributed more than 8.3 million meals of food to member agencies, programs, and food banks in our region last year. And whereas food banks across the country, including the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention, to encourage involvement in the efforts to end hunger in our community, local community. Now therefore, we, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors, do recognize September as Hunger Action Month in Blackhawk County and call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Do we have a motion on the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Proclamation is approved. Thank you so much, Barb. We will move on to other business. This is a resolution that the federal aid agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for Surface Transportation Swap Projects, STGB SWAP COO-7. This is on Dunkerton Road from Highway 63 East, four miles to Elk Run Road, with an estimated total cost of $1.8 million.
So we would like to, we did apply through the MPO for federal funds, and now, of course, we receive swap funds from the Iowa Department of Transportation. So we received this amount from the MPO, and we are using that to resurface Dunkerton Road. As you know, this is a road that's heavily traveled by truck traffic that's going many times to the northeast site area, Tyson's area. So I would ask that you sign this agreement. We will follow rules and regulations set out by the Iowa DOT, including having a DOT letting.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is a resolution, the Bridge Embargo Establishing Vehicle and Load Limits for Structure Number 074290, Crossing Miller Creek, located on Hammond Avenue between East Corey Road and East Eagle Road, on the west line of Section 14 T879R13W, with a load limit of 15 tons to reduce to one lane be approved and the signs be erected advertising the permissible maximum weights, as recommended by Catherine Nicholas County Engineer.
Yeah, this came about to an inspection just done last month, and then we also had a follow-up on these two bridges that we're asking to date for the embargoes on. These were also inspected by our bridge consultant, and they also confirmed that we should post these, lower the rating to allow, you know, allow lighter loads to cross the structure. This is scheduled to be replaced next year, so the timing is working out well for the structure.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a resolution, the Bridge Embargo Stashing Vehicle and Load Limits for Structure Number 074270, Crossing Miller Creek, located on East Corey Road between Hammond Road and Hess Road, on the north line of Section 14 T87NR13W, with a load limit of 15 tons approved and signs erected advising of the maximum, or the permissible maximum weight limit. Kathy?
Yeah, this is very similar to the one you just approved. It's in, they're within a half a mile of each other. Timber decay of the piles is the primarily, primary cause of the structural decomposition. This is also slated for replacement in 2021, excuse me. The prior bridge is scheduled for replacement in 2022. This one will be replaced next year, and we had to have that in our five-year plan for replacement. So it was confirmed by our structural engineers as well. So I would ask that you approve the new weight limit.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a resolution that the federal aid swap agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for Highway Bridge Program Project, BROS SWAP COO-7, on East Gresham Road over Crane Creek, from North Elk Run Road, east .25 miles, north one mile, with an estimated total cost of $700,000.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yep, so this project is, was closed earlier this spring after an inspection. It has, it was in our five-year plan. We did program it to use our federal bridge funds, which are now swap funds from the Iowa DOT. And we are combining that with a match money of $140,000 of local money, but we have budgeted for $700,000. We're working on the plans now, and it should be let, I believe, in January, January letting through the Iowa DOT. And this agreement says that we will comply with the rules and regulations established by the Iowa DOT.
Here's a motion and second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a resolution that the federal aid swap agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation for Highway Bridge Program, BROS Swap COO-7, on Kimball Road, or Kimball Avenue, or Miller Creek, with estimated total cost of $350,000. It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, another similar situation, a somewhat smaller structure. This will also be a DOT letting next, early next year. And we will have two contract bridges. These two will be our contract bridges next year. And I would ask that you approve this funding agreement. Again, we will be following all regulations and rules established by the DOT in order to use this money.
Very good. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little.
Yes.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Next is a resolution that the proposal received from Dan Corbin Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa, to readjust the existing 2007 Blackhawk County geodetic control network and produce IARC coordinates for each of the network monuments in Blackhawk County for $58,524 for fiscal year 2021. Be approved and the chair to sign for the same.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kathy?
Yeah, so we did budget for FY '21 for $58,500. This is slightly over that, but what I, as I've told you, this is kind of a worst-case scenario based on the number of, reestablishing a number of control points. We're hopeful that that number, that many will not need to be reestablished. I sent you a long email on this, so this is really more of a maintenance type of procedure that we need to go through on this control network that agencies all over the Midwest, all over the world, really are actually having to readjust to this new datum. And I feel that the timing is, is right for this right now. The DOT has been reporting that we will, the outlook for the road use tax fund revenue is better than they projected earlier in the year. They're now thinking that it might be within 10% of a normal year for the rest of the year. And I would like to, in the next week or so, put together a couple slides to show you more of the guidance that the Iowa DOT has given us. But we did budget for this for FY '21, and by doing it now, we can get a discount because Dan Corbin and Associates, they're doing Bremer County as well. And some of the control points are, we share several of those points. So we can actually get a little bit of a discount by doing it now.
So you think it's going to be lower?
We're hopeful that it's, yeah, that it's a little bit lower. And I can, we can report back to you.
Maybe the correct language should be up to $58,524.
Sure.
That'll be part of my motion unless there was a.
Second.
There is a motion. All right, but you take that as a friendly amendment, right?
Yes.
All right. All right. Is there any further discussion or questions? Resolution, this is up to $58,524. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Jalka.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Short.
Yes. The resolution is approved. Next is a motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Kim Veder, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for the same. Purchase 15 office computers not to exceed $13,750 from CDWG to be used by Attorney's Office and Conservation Department.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Kim?
These are just rotation computers, and the reason why it says not to exceed is based on the number of computers that he was working on a discount for, so.
James, you had a question on these. Did you get an answer? Didn't I see?
Yeah, sorry. Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, you want to respond on that? I was going to say, too, because I don't think we all got that response.
Sorry. My question was if we can consolidate some of the computer equipment, meaning, you know, the CD drives that we don't quite use and that kind of thing, if we can, you know, see if we can get something cheaper, especially moving forward, we just don't use those, you know, products. Well, Kim had responded to me and let me know that the processing, or the processors aren't as large in the smaller computers, and therefore we might result in lower quality. So, and part of my question wasn't to lower the quality of the computers, just to see if we can get rid of some of the extras, so. But nope, that was the.
Yeah, the drives are pretty much a standard thing, so if we went to a machine that didn't have it, the processor wasn't as good as.
So these are replacements?
Yes.
How old are the ones that were replaced?
Five to six years old, some.
What do you do with them? I haven't really seen anything from the board on disposal.
Well, what we, part of the problem is we're going to Windows 10 on these machines. And so these older ones, when you try and upgrade them, they're pretty worthless. As James can attest to, because one of his machines is, one, his and Dana, well, the new person, machines we tried to upgrade, and they were really, they just didn't have the.
So we had to destroy them, or what?
Yes, most, most of them. Some of them, we pulled memory out of one machine and kind of cannibalized it, I guess, to try and increase it. So we've got some machines that we're reusing, but on the most part, we don't.
Okay. Why don't you keep the board rested on what you do with them?
Yeah, well, and yes, so I guess at least once a year, and I think this year we'll do it again, is that some of that equipment that, like the old GIS server, is still over there. You know, they're bigger. We're going to have another load to Midwest recycling. So I'll let you know when that happens, okay? Because they do it in an environmentally good way, because.
We have a policy pertaining how to dispose.
Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion or questions? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Next is a motion to receive and place and file the Blackhawk County Extension Reconciliation Statement Affidavits and Published Report, Agricultural Extension Education Operating Fund, July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2020. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved. Next is a motion to direct the county finance director to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 a.m. on Tuesday, October 13, 2020, in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Court Hosts, 316 East Fifth Street, Waterloo, Iowa, on proposed additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $10 million in general obligation bonds for essential county purposes. Provide funds to pay for the costs of works and facilities useful for the collection and disposal of solid waste. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion is approved. Next is a motion that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors authorize and direct the county auditor to cancel outstanding checks through June 30, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. It is now 9:21 a.m. This is a bid hearing and opening on the proposed lease agreements, term of November 1, 2020 to October 31, 2023, for the use of one or more county-owned flood-damaged vacant lots.
Motion to receive and place and file proof of publication.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to close the hearing after oral. Written comments are received.
Second.
Are there any written comments, Mr. Veder?
No, sir.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, the bids will be open.
They all came in on time?
Yes, they did. Thank you, Rory Giving, Major Superintendent. It appears that we've got seven bids. In the looks of the, the envelopes, it doesn't appear that we have any duplicate bids on any one property. So I will start, I tried to put them in order as they are listed on your sheet. So this particular one is for the first property identified on your form. This bid is from Fred Weber, in the amount of $5.35, it appears. And again, this is for 8712-10-402-007. This is for the second line item on your form. This is also from Fred Weber, in the amount of $5.35 for parcel number 8712-10-402-009. For the third property on the form. I sliced it in half. This is also from Fred Weber, in the amount of $5.35 for parcel number 8712-10-403-001. For the fifth parcel down. This is from Brian McCarty, in the amount of $31 for parcel 8812-17-126-004.
Know that that one's listed, but that's okay.
Pardon me?
The number on that one, I don't think was listed on the fifth parcel, is it? But that's, like I said, if it was 5407, widen.
Yeah, that is, would be the, I'm sorry, the fourth parcel, the fourth item down on your list there.
Okay.
What was the name again?
Uh, Brian McCarty. And it's 8812-17-126-004.
Yeah, fourth one.
Think I might have said the fifth one down, so.
Okay.
That should be the fifth one down. Mark Mangridge, in the amount of $78.
This next one down?
This would be the fifth one down, yes.
How much?
$78. Then we're going to jump down to the third one from the bottom. This is from Michael Rup, in the amount of $100. And this is for parcel 9014-07-204-004.
How do you spell that last name?
I believe it's R-U-P-E.
T as in Thomas?
Pardon me?
R-U-T as in Thomas, E?
P as in Peter.
Thank you.
And this one is for the last parcel identified on the form. This one is from Jason Klemke. For parcel number 9014-08-101-002, in the amount of $72.
That's it?
And that concludes our bid.
Make a motion that we review and place on file.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to review and place and file. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The bids will be placed and filed for review. Next is discussion, county preparing for possible updates for COVID-19. Is there anything anybody wishes to discuss today?
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Nafisa Cize.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. This is Dr. Nafisa Cissé Bonnier.
Good morning.
Here at the Health Department. There's not really any major update except for there's new guidance coming out at 11:00. But there's just, we were meant to not communicate it until the governor's press conference at 11:00, but the word is already out in the community. And so this is in relations to our, what is considered an exposure as it relates to context tracing. So in communicating with the state yesterday, they basically reviewed, were reviewing school data, looking at schools that require face masks versus those that don't. And they found that there is less transmission in schools, schools that did require face masks. So I'm very proud of the, all the superintendents here in Blackhawk County that listened to our guidance before the reopening of schools in requiring face masks. And so with that, they are going to not consider individuals that have face masks. So if one, one, if two people have face masks, they will not consider them to be exposed. But additional detailed guidance will be out this, today at around 11:00 a.m. And so, and I will follow up in writing to inform you all in terms of the updated guidance and what we will release to the, to the general public. So that's an update on, on guidance, which, which changes our workflow. We've already notified the superintendents last, this, yesterday during our, our meeting. We had a meeting also with EMA in regards to vaccine planning. So we had a meeting with the healthcare providers just to give them updates on COVID-19 vaccine protocols and some of the strategies that we need to start thinking about before we have the vaccine. So that's where we're at in terms of COVID update on my level.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Nafisa. Next, are there any reports or information from the board?
Motion to adjourn.
I'd just first like to say I attended a vigil Sunday night in remembrance about addressing the shooting that took place Saturday morning. And just, just to reiterate, reiterate the words of, of law enforcement and community leaders that if you know something about what happened, that you need to say something. There's no honor in, in hiding the, the identity of, of someone that perpetuates a mass shooting like that in our community. And, and so we, we need the community's involvement to get ahead of this before this spirals out of control into, into more incidents. And I'd also just like to share my thoughts and thanks to, yesterday, there was a, I've seen the explosion that happened in Dubuque on, on Lawrence Boulevard. That was a, that would be my nephew's home, my adult nephew, Michael Hanson. And thankfully, I just want to thank the, the people that got everybody out in time so that nobody was harmed in it. But just my, my thoughts with him is he's going to have a long recovery after, after losing, losing everything. And just another reminder of just how, how quickly things can change in somebody's life. And, but overall, just really thankful for the people that evacuated all those people in time. But, all right. There's been a motion to adjourn. Do we have a, a second? All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.